Good evening. I'd like to call the order of the Licensing Board of the City of West Bend. We've got three items on our agenda tonight. Our first is the Licensing Board Regular Meeting Minutes from January 6, 2025.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Butchlick and Alderman Zingshaim. Any comments, questions, corrections? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Our next item is the Barton House LLC Liquor License Transfer.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Zingshaim and Butchlick. Any comments, questions, discussion on this one? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Our last one is Tequila Ria Amusement Device License Application, and that was in your packet as well. I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Butchlick and Zingshaim. Any comments, discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries, and our Licensing Board is adjourned.
I would like to call the order of the Board of Public Works. We have two items on the agenda. Item number one, the approval of the minutes from January 20, 2025.
Motion to approve.
Alderman Allen, a second? Alderwoman Sizer. Any deletions, additions? There are none. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item number two, Ordinance Amending Section 13.17 and 13.18 of the Municipal Code Sewer Service Charges. Good evening, Ruth.
John, thank you. Good evening, everyone. Tonight, we bring before you an amendment to Section 13.17 and 13.18 of the Municipal Code specifically relating to the sewer service charges for general utility billing customers. The proposed changes to this section are necessary due to the increase in rates that was approved by the Board of Public Works and Common Council. This amendment incorporates the Step Two Increase that became effective on January 1, 2025, and ensures that the code reflects the current rate structure. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Do you have any motion?
A motion to approve.
Alderman Allen, and second? Second, Alderman Sparts. Are there any questions for Ruth? There are none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, Ruth. Being no business before the Board of Public Works, I adjourn as chair.
I call to order a meeting of the Finance Committee. This evening, we have four agenda items on our... Four items on our agenda. The first is the approval of the minutes from our regular meeting, January 20, 2025. Any comments, questions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Allen, Alderman Butchlick. Any questions, comments, additions, deletions? There being none, all those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Second item on our agenda this evening is a resolution to accept donations to the Fire Department. Welcome, Chief.
Good evening. Did they bring a resolution? For the acceptance of a $100 donation from Susan Gulkey. This donation is for the Smoke Detector CO program, and we would use those funds for that purpose.
Motion to approve with the thanks of the council.
Second. Thank you, Man Alderman Allen and Alderman Zingshaim. Any questions, comments? All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much, Chief.
Thank you.
The next item is a resolution authorizing the appropriation of funds from 2024 sale of surplus equipment. Is there someone to speak on this, or it's just covered in our agenda?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you very much.
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Allen and Alderman Berquist. Any comments, questions? All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Our final agenda item is a resolution authorizing the appropriation of funds from 2025 sale of surplus equipment.
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Alderman Allen and Alderwoman Sizer. Any comments, questions? All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. There being no further business before the Finance Committee, I adjourn as chair.
Good evening. It's Monday, February 3, 2025, and this is a meeting of the Common Council of the City of West Bend. More than 24 hours in advance of this meeting, notice of the time, place, date, and subject matter of the meeting was posted in accordance to Wisconsin state statutes. Lisa, can you confirm this meeting was properly posted?
Yes, I can.
Thank you. I invite you to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We recognize a full quorum of our Common Council here tonight. Our first item of business is approval of the regular meeting minutes from January 20, 2025.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Butchlick and Alderman Allen. Any comments, questions, corrections? Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Our consent agenda tonight, items two through seven, the Barton House LLC Liquor License Transfer, Tequila Ria Amusement Device License Application, donations to the Fire Department, authorizing the appropriation of funds from the surplus of equipment sales, and a resolution to accept another donation to the Fire Department. I think that was a duplicate on there.
A motion to approve. It's not a duplicate. There's two different...
Were there two different ones?
Two different sale of surplus equipment.
Yeah, sorry. Thank you, Alderman Allen. Is there a second? Thank you, Alderwoman Sizer. Any comments, questions?
I do have one question, Mayor, specifically to the Barton House LLC transfer. Upon my reading of the background and some of the comments there, I think it's important that we ask the police chief for his opinion regarding the transfer of that license.
Sure. Chief.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I don't answer any specific questions for it, as you're aware. We review all applications for liquor license permits, premises, and will only submit a memo to you when we're officially asking for a denial. That we're not doing that tonight, as we have some very set standards that we follow. Ian can help as well on this, that we follow through the state statutes that ensure that we're not being discriminatory based on an arrest or conviction record. Our standard that has been set over the years by this elected body, our civil attorney and case law, looks at five years as a reasonable time period. And then within those five years, looks for three violations that are job-related to the task of issuing and procuring selling alcohol. Or there has been times when there's been an egregious enough record within those five years that less than three violations I brought before you, from Chief Moyle brought before you. In looking at Mr. Ryan's record, clearly I spoke to some of you today, there's some concerns. But I do note that the majority of his concerns that would be job-related are quite some time ago, well outside of that ten, five-year window. He does have two violations within a five-year window, but none that point to job-related, which puts us in compliance with state statutes. On eleven, Ian can speak.
Yep. Several years ago, they updated the FLSA, the Fair Labor Standards Act, for the state and explicitly said it applies to all licenses in addition to jobs. So the same standards that you would use for hiring and firing for employees apply to whether we grant licenses or not. So we have to apply those. That's why I would guess at least John has been on long enough that they, we used to have like pending, you know, somebody had been arrested and had pending court dates. You can no longer consider those except in rare circumstances, so that's why those all fell off. There were, there's other exceptions that, you know, we stopped considering when they made those changes. And one of the things that it made clear, and actually kind of helped, because the alcohol licensing statutes were just referenced, like no felon could hold an alcohol license. So people were, we were going back to like 1980 sometimes because of that language. It helped clarify that it has to be within that reasonable time period and related to the job. So just because somebody has a felony for a financial crime doesn't mean they can't bartend. Right? You know, not that that's the case in this one, but that's an example of, you know, two different kind of areas, right? So.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief.
Sure. We should point out, Mr. Ryan does not have a felony.
Correct. That is not the case in this one. I want to clarify. That was an example just for clarity purposes.
But as always, if you approve the permit, the Police Department is committed to making sure that we comply, our license premises, comply with all laws. And we'll be keeping a close eye on, as we do with every license premise, and we'll bring any issues in front of you.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Chief. We have a motion and a second on the consent agenda as it's in our packet. Would you like to vote on this? All items two through seven, or is there a desire to remove an item and vote on it separately?
I'm comfortable with moving forward with all items.
Okay. There's a motion and a second. Any more comments, questions, discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Consent agenda is approved. Our first action item tonight is a approval of a third amendment to a pre-development agreement. I'll turn this one over to Ian.
So this is an amendment to the existing development agreement for the Riverbend Development, the, with Hendrix and Riverbend LLC. The Second Amendment established procedures where if the parts of the property, parts of their development, so basically the cast iron building was sold, that the sale could be without the backup obligations under that developer's agreement. So basically, the developer has a, an obligation to backfill any shortages we have. So this, what this amendment is doing is allowing the sale of that building, and the new owner will not take on those obligations. Those will stay with Hendrix and Riverbend. The, there should be a cash or analysis attached, I believe, from Aylers. If not, they have done the analysis, and it looks like it will be net positive in the next three to five years. So there's no huge concerns about transferring the building without, you know, without that obligation and keeping it back for the original developer and the Hendrix group, so.
So in layman's terms, net-net, no negative impact on...
No negative impact. This is allowing that development to continue on and be successful while the original developer retains not just the obligation, but they also get repaid as the increment shifts, and they would get repaid what they had to front to make the, to make the debt payments for that, for that TID.
Yeah, please.
Ian mentioned Aylers. Aylers updates our financial plans for the TID on an annual basis. And in this instance, Hendrix, the Hendrix Group has fronted over $4 million for infrastructure improvements that have been made in time. And the TID is now, as Ian shared, in a position where those payments can start going back to them. So they're going to be retaining not only the liability for future shortfalls, if there are any, but they're going to be retaining that $4 million that will come back to them as well. They're selling the buildings with, without that liability, or net-net, I guess is the way Ian said it. It's definitely positive. The TID's in really good, good financial position. It's been no secret that Hendrix has been looking for a buyer for the last couple of years. They had a couple of close calls on potential buyers, and they fell through. And in this instance, they're actually prepared to close really soon after tonight's council action, if it's positive. I can answer any questions as well as Ian on this topic, but it's definitely a good news story for the TID and for the future of that district.
I'll entertain a motion to put it on the floor, and then if there's more questions, we can...
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Butchlick and Alderman Sternig. Any questions, discussion? All right, seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Our next item is an ordinance establishing a ward redistricting plan. And Lisa, I'll turn that over to you.
What this is, is we had the annexation that went into effect on November 8, and this simply adds Ward 27, which is that particular property, into the ward boundaries in the code.
And so Lisa, that becomes part of Alderman Schmidt's district?
Correct.
Aldermane district?
I believe so.
Congratulations. I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Schmidt and Alderman Sternig. Any comments, questions? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Our next two items, I was a little bit off, you could say, a couple of weeks ago. Any, any ordinance that is introduced at the first meeting where there's action, if an older person votes against it, then the ordinance is laid over and taken up at the next meeting. So we had the first reading of item number 10 and item number 11, and it was a six-to-one vote. And so now today is the second reading, and we vote again. So that's why this is on our agenda again. The first one is the comprehensive plan change for the 18 acres located on the north side of County Trunk Highway NN and west of US Highway 45. And then the second item is rezoning it, same property, from M3 Plan Business Park District to RS4 Single Family Residential. Jim, anything else you want to add on that?
No.
Those two items?
Yeah, I'm here to answer any questions for that second reading.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Motion to approve, I assume?
Yes, motion to approve.
Thank you, Alderman Butchlick and Alderman Allen. Any comments, questions, discussion? This is on item number 10, the comprehensive plan change. Seeing none, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
And that motion does carry this time, seven-to-one. And then item number 11, same property, rezoning the 18 acres from Planned Business Park, M3 to RS4 Residential. I'll entertain a motion.
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Sparts and Alderman Allen. Any comments, questions, discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
And that motion carries, seven-to-one. All right, we'll move on to ordinance number, well, item number 12. It's an ordinance amending Section 13.17 and 13.18 of the Municipal Code Sewer Service Changes. Ruth just gave us a presentation on this. This is our first reading, and so we can take action on it tonight. It will pass if it's unanimous. If not, we'll do a second reading at our next meeting.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you, Alderman Butchlick and Alderman Allen. Is there any comments, question, discussion?
So these rates are already in effect?
Are these rates already in effect, Ruth?
Yes, they are. This is just incorporating them into the municipal code to update it, so it's correct. It reflects the current rates.
Any other questions? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries. Our next is item number 13, Discussion, Recommendation, and Referral to Plan Commission for the street vacation of approximately 750 feet of street, Wingate Street east of Stockhausen Lane. And this is by the Department of Community Development. Go ahead.
Thank you. So we're asking the council to, trying to update the council also on projects that are going on throughout the city. Part of our process is to introduce this to the council before going to Plan Commission for their recommendation. This is basically just to advise the council that we're looking at doing a street vacation. We're not looking for any kind of input and comments that the council may have for vacating this. So in this case, we're looking at vacating the westwardly 750 square feet, or westwardly 750 feet of Wingate Street. This will help to facilitate the redevelopment of the area for We Energy's site for moving their campus for that. So this would actually help facilitate that and combine properties on both sides of the street that they're acquiring for one large campus for their development.
There's a good picture of this on page 92 of your packet, where Wingate would essentially become a small cul-de-sac, and then vacating the remainder of the street to accommodate the new We Energies building. This is behind Pigly Wiggly. It's an area that I jog in, and I'm quite familiar with it, and hardly ever see a car back there, so personally, I don't think this affects our community in any substantial way, because it's just a street that's not heavily traveled. And to make room for this development is a good thing, so. I'll entertain a motion first. Why don't we do that? Thank you, Alderwoman Sizer. Alderman Sparts, any comments, questions?
Has anybody made notifications to the property owners in the area already?
So we will be doing that as part of this process. So the next step now is to take it and draft up an ordinance that will come, or a resolution which will come back to council on the 17th. And then we will also send out notice to the neighboring properties, along with the other utilities in the area for verifying them of the vacation.
I actually vote on this?
You can vote on this, but yeah, there'll be a preliminary resolution at the next meeting, and then there'll be a public hearing on it as well. I want to say probably either the second meeting in March or the first meeting in April, there'll be a public hearing, and the final resolution would be adopted at that point.
Because this is on the Plan Commission agenda tomorrow evening, correct?
Correct, yeah, yep.
The only question I have, and maybe it's appropriate to ask it during the Plan Commission, is who's responsible for the costs of the vacation, it sounds kind of weird, of, you know, ripping up that road as well as building or constructing the cul-de-sac that's been identified as a potential in that area?
Yeah, we've been working with We Energies on that, and it'll be part of the agreement that they'll actually build the cul-de-sac, and then they can abandon what they need to abandon for the utilities that are out there. We've worked with them. The water will actually terminate at the end of the cul-de-sac with a hydrant, since there's no need to actually have that section loop from end to end. And then the sanitary sewer that's out there, that actually will become private for them to use if they wish, or they could vacate that. And the storm sewer will also become private, because it's only serving that section of their development. So we actually don't need any easements out there for any kind of municipal utilities.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions?
Are there any residential in this area at all?
It's all commercial, yeah.
It's all commercial and industrial, correct.
Any other questions? So we're looking to vote to send this, basically, our referral to Plan Commission. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks. Item number 14 was, our system was adding duplicate items on here, so we don't need to do item 14. We've already done that one. Our last one is an ordinance to repeal and replace Municipal Code Section 2.11, salaries and expense allowance for aldermen and mayor.
We, we should not require a a motion at this point, because we're taking up something that was already delayed to this meeting, correct?
Yeah, so I guess I'll lead the discussion on this, because I made the request at the last meeting of Jay to pull together, which he included in the agenda packet that went out, comparable salary and expense or compensation for aldermen and mayors around the state of Wisconsin. And thank you very much, Jay, for pulling that together and organizing in a way that kind of gave us a look at like communities, if you will, from a size standpoint. I spent some time reviewing that and going back to the original proposal. I think as I viewed it, and this will be my opinion, and I've handed out a sheet that kind of provides an alternate or amended proposal for consideration and/or discussion, which basically looked at, you know, if we look at those, the average with populations of 22,000 to 39,000, we fall into aldermen salary or compensation of 6,123, and the mayor at over $20,000. In my opinion, I think from an aldermanic standpoint, that number seems pretty, pretty fair. I think as I look at the mayor, that might be a little bit high. If we look at the Washington County Board of Supervisors, supervisors have a compensation of 6,600 or pay of 6,600, and the chairman over 20,000. Mark, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but when you looked at your original proposal, you were basing it on basically inflation from 2004 to 2024?
No.
Okay.
No, I went back to the point, there were some out-of-sequences raises that were done. And when I was asking why they happened that way of some of the people who were involved in the process was it was more political, well, we'll do this one now. In other words, the, prior to 1993, the salaries stayed pretty much in lockstep. When they went up, both went up. And then between then and the last raise, which happened in 2004, there was, the alderman got raises twice, the mayor only got one once. I went back to 1993 and took the baseline then.
Okay.
So that, so that the, the aldermanic and mayoral salaries would achieve, they would be inflated at the same rate. So it, it baselined at a point when everything was all lined up.
Okay.
As opposed to baselining it at some arbitrary date.
Fair enough. What I did in the analysis that is before you this evening is looked at the originals, took into account inflation over the time period of 2004 to 2024, which depending upon the index you look at, is anywhere from 66% to 70% over that time period. Interestingly enough, your numbers align with that 70% from 2020, 2004 to 2024. When we look at the roles that we're in, and this is my opinion on this, there is an element of public service to what it is we do. And when I looked at these numbers, I was looking at how can we fall within similar types of roles within our community or communities? Both in terms of comps in similar cities and municipalities to our size, as well as looking at Washington County and what supervisors earn. And these are all people in that public service sphere. So from that perspective, I looked at it with a, you know, 35% increase versus a 70% increase in salary, taking into account the fact that there is a portion of public service that we do. That being said, we should also be, I feel we should be compensated similarly to those who are serving in similar roles, much like we looked at our non-represented, as well as our union employees for the city, and use that as a way to then derive a new total compensation, looking at the expense side and having that roughly aligned with inflation over that time period, easily divisible by 12, which gets us to the salary of 5718 and expenses for 600 for aldermen, and a salary of 10,000 to 84, with expenses of 3,000 for the mayor. That kept both, that, that in itself kept the ratio, if you will, from alderman to mayor the same. So if that's something that needs to be further discussed, it can be, but I wanted to present this as an alternative to what was proposed in the original ordinance from last month.
My wife, my wife did some, based on a Facebook group she's in. She had done a, you know, tried to figure out what, what we were making. And she said, you guys should all quit being aldermen and go to work at Meyer, because then you get, you'll get more money and benefits. So, you know, it's, it's, I didn't do this to get rich. I, I've, you know, I've never taken a penny in donations for campaign costs. I certainly spend more than I, than I get. And, you know, the tax liability of my salary and expenses is clearly eating up whatever, whatever else is there. But when I went out, one of the things I did when I decided that I wasn't going to run again was I said, if I can find somebody who, who will, you know, I think, do a good job for the district, I'll go ahead and not run again. job for the district, I'll go ahead and not run again. And I, I believe I did. And so, one of the things was I approached several people who said, I can't afford to be an alderman. You know, it doesn't, it doesn't pay enough to, to cover the, the expenses. I don't know if, how many of you have gone out to get a babysitter, but it, it's not free. It's like, I think, what was it, four years ago when I, when I put forward a proposal to the school board to increase their salaries? And again, three years ago when I did it, the cost of babysitters was twenty dollars an hour. And, and the compensation for, for an alderman or in the school board member was way less than twenty dollars an hour. And that didn't even include mandatory committee assignments. So, I felt that a reasonable compensation for an alderman would be, you ought to be able to get a babysitter. So, I think the thirty-five percent is, is just a, let's come up with a number as opposed to let's come up with the right number.
If you, if there is going to be a vote to adopt or amend and adopt, I would suggest one change for the mayor's salary, just to make sure it's clarified. I assume the intent was in twenty-twenty-seven, at the same time as the aldermen receive a pay increase, the mayor would, I would just change the language there that says commencing May first, twenty-twenty-seven. That way it doesn't confuse the fact that the mayor, the mayor, next mayoral election is twenty-twenty-six. You certainly can set like a phase in so that, you know, the mayor, the first year of the mayor's term is at the lower rate and the second and third year would be at the higher rate. But I just want to make, make it clear that, so there's no confusion that it's linked to a reelection of the mayor at, at some point, just commencing May first for both of that, print one and print four A.
I don't, I don't have a problem with that. I would consider that a friendly amendment.
When I, when I took this position, I knew what the compensation was and I felt comfortable with it and I still feel comfortable with it. And I just don't think this is a good look personally.
I, I'm clearly not going to benefit. I, I've been told, oh, you're just doing this to line your pockets. I will not benefit.
Right.
Nobody that's currently here will benefit unless they get reelected, period. In other words, we are doing this for the future, much like people plant trees. We plant a lot of trees in the city, you know? We plant trees that, we have to wait a while before we're going to get any benefit of the shade they're going to provide. You know, the, the, we're, we're going to twenty-twenty-four and we're saying, oh, let's, let's get to where we are in twenty-twenty-four. We're not, this doesn't go into effect until twenty-twenty-seven. So, there's another three years of inflation to deal with. Plus, you're, you know, what's, what's, the amended proposal is, you know, let's do it at thirty-five percent. That's, that's half, okay? You're saying it looks better if we do only half as much.
Any more comments?
I was looking at the comparables and I ranked the ones in the square of the eleven that compared to twenty thousand, twenty-two thousand to forty thousand. And when you balance them out by, by wage, we're on the bottom. We're number eleven out of the eleven. I think otherwise we're in the middle, a little less than, no, we're on the bottom for when you, when you do that by wage. When you do it by, when we did it, if you would do the, the rate that Mr. Allen was proposing, it was seventy-two forty, it would put us at number two, which to me is really too high. I think with what our philosophy is here, we like to be more in the middle. I did the percentages, yeah, I came up with like sixty-nine percent with the proposed seventy-two. The thirty-five is more chewable to me. It puts us more in the middle. Actually, it puts us a little bit, I think, one or two below the middle and I'd be happier with that. The mayor's rates, I think, as proposed, I think with what the mayors do, they're paid, that's worth it. I, I wouldn't adjust it. I'd leave it at what was proposed, but I, that's my feeling.
I would like to, also, the problem, we always seem to be put ourselves, or it isn't us, it's previous. And probably twenty years from now, somebody will do the same thing, previous aldermatic, let us, put us in this position now, but this, if this would have been taken care of probably fifteen years ago, we wouldn't have any issue with an increase. But now because we've been sitting here for twenty years, it's a little hard to swallow. The, the original proposal, I just, it's just a little bit, I know there's an awful lot. It isn't just coming here for a council meeting just every other Monday. There's a lot of work done previously. You, you get this stuff from the clerk, you go through it. I'm willing to bet, every meeting, I've got at least twenty, twenty-five hours in. I'm constantly bothering our people here, asking questions. And, you know, it's, the time I've spent here, I've learned an awful lot. And yes, money would be some concern, but I enjoy my job. I enjoy what I'm doing. But Matt, what you proposed here, I think, is, is exactly right in line with Washington County Board of Supervisors and that. And obviously, the chair is a little higher than our mayor, but I like this thirty-five percent. I can really, I know my constituents will be able to have no issues with this. I have one phone call or one email. I just have one email saying that they appreciate it, that we took a look at it first and come back with it. So, I think this is a great, you've got my approval on this thirty-five percent increase. I think it's a great job in putting it together and I think we won't have any issues with anybody else. We just need to have more people interested in, in aldermatic positions as well. We're not getting any younger and always new, new people, new, new people will be able to help out. That's my comment.
I, I'd like to, I, I, I still think, you know, we're just saying, oh, well, we're afraid to do what we need. We're afraid to do the right thing, so let's do the safe thing. You know, if, if, I, I'm not going to benefit from this. I still think the right thing is what I've proposed. The thirty-five percent is, oh, that's something that's going to be much, you know, much easier to sell. But I, I think it's, the right thing is, is what we should be doing, not the easy thing to sell.
I, I appreciate that perspective. Having been involved in our compensation and collective bargaining committees and union negotiations over the course of the last six months, I can't sit here and honestly look the city's employees in the face and say, we need a seventy percent raise, which puts us at number two in ranking in terms of salary or compensation amongst our peers, when we held a pretty tight line on the fact that we want to make sure that we are fairly compensating our employees for the job that they do serving our community. And in most instances, it, it was getting them and making sure that in adjustments and in wage increases over the course of their contracts, they're above, slightly above the average. They're not near the bottom and they're definitely not at the top. And I think that is a philosophy that we have negotiated and bargained in good faith with our unions. I believe that is the approach that we took as we looked at our non-represented employees and the adjustments that we made to their salaries and benefits and in their increases. And that's why when I look at this and I look at the comparables, I think that the proposal that I've brought as an amendment to the original is more in line with where we've been philosophically as a council as we look at compensation for the service to our community.
I guess the question I would ask is, you know, we want to, we want to land in the middle, but should we land in the middle of people that also haven't had raises for decades? There's two thousand two Franklin, two thousand four West Bend. There's a lot that don't know when they last did a salary. It was, it was not easy to find, to find comparables to begin with. Lot of this isn't online. So, you get a hold of people. But, you know, here we have a couple that, we have Franklin that last raised theirs in two thousand two and they're way above us. I think they're what, first, first among? So, among the, among the, the group that's ten thousand more than us to ten thousand less than us in, in population, Franklin sits at the top at nine thousand and they haven't, their, their salary hasn't moved in, longer than ours hasn't moved.
Mark, do you know if that, if Franklin's mayor is full-time?
Uh, no. The only mayor that's full-time is outside of the, the group that we call our close comparables, which is the ones that are boxed on the list. It would be Shebogun is a full-time mayor. But Jay, you had indicated that they, they have increased their mayor's salary again?
Yeah, just after this was published, I, I found another article that indicated the mayor is making seven, or to make seventy-five thousand in, in twenty-twenty-five, a twenty-six percent increase. So, so that is a full-time position. They had a, a full-time mayor historically and then a few years ago, they went to a city administrator and a full-time mayor. And I think the salary has gone down and then back up in the, in the mayor arena. I did try to, and that was my error, I did try to exclude full-time mayors. I made the error of including Shebogun because I, I knew they hired an administrator, I didn't realize they kept on their full-time mayor. There, there are very few municipalities that have both a full-time mayor and a, a full-time city administrator.
I have a comment just about the expenses for mayor, whether it's thirty-nine hundred dollars a year or three thousand dollars a year, even eighteen hundred. Maybe gas, going to a meeting or going to an event, but West Bend's not so big that I feel like I'm spending a lot of money on gas to get places around the city. Occasionally, maybe meeting with a resident and I might buy him a cup of coffee out of my own pocket, but the expense column to me is, I guess, it must just be another way of providing compensation. So, you know, that's a number I look at in both columns of three thousand and thirty-nine hundred that really don't have any utility to me at all. I don't, I don't think of that when I, when I meet with somebody that I'm using my monthly stipend to buy a cup of coffee or that my gas is being covered or anything like that. So, I can, obviously just speak to the, to the mayor's salary of, call it ninety-five hundred dollars. I'm, I'm one of these that I did not do this for the money at all and didn't sway me one way or another on whether or not to run or, or run for reelection. So, you know, I am perfectly fine with ninety-four hundred eighteen dollars. I don't need a monthly expense stipend. And, you know, if there was any sort of an increase, I would want it to be very, very minimal. I, I would rather spend, you know, nine thousand dollars on roads versus paying me more money. So, don't care about Oconomowoc or Sun Prairie or Onalaska, these others that get paid more. I, it just does not, I have a full-time job that is my source of income and, and I do this to serve my community. So, can't speak for previous mayors, but that's, that's where I'm coming from.
And I feel likewise. And I'm satisfied with where we're at. And how, how would we envision that we'd implement this expense account to? Would you keep receipts or how does that?
The same, the same way it's done now.
It's just put in your check.
It's put in your check and it's taxed. I, I would, you know, when I, when I worked for a company, I had expenses, I submitted an expense statement and, and things that, that were qualified for expenses got expensed and it didn't count against my taxable income. I would much rather not call them expenses and actually have some way to, to, to expense things, whether it's, you know, it's the, the meetings with, you know, the coffee with a, with a constituent or, or paying for your internet or, you know, any of the, the things that you encounter.
In my opinion, we need to be paid what we're worth. I think the proposal, original proposal, if that puts us to the top, I don't like that. But I don't like a tiny increase that's going to still leave us close to the bottom. This hasn't been changed in twenty years realistically. We should have done it five, well, we should have done it five, ten, fifteen years ago and we didn't, so it's time to at least do something. Is there any way we can look at in-between? Fifty percent increase, what would that do? You know, would that make everybody happy? That would maybe put us in the middle. Would that put us kind of in the middle? Is that what you did here with?
Fifty percent.
Fifty percent puts us still close to the bottom.
Thirty-five percent puts us in.
Okay, okay. So, could we look at something in-between then? But we still need to be paid what we're worth. We haven't done that in twenty years. It's time to do something.
Yeah, we, we as, you know, to use the we as a council to, to represent the efforts of a lot of past councils, we did a lot of things to, to, you know, to reduce staff and, and cut back on what, what we were, we were spending money on. We, we didn't always do it. One, one thing we asked, we asked about something in the last budget cycle, you know, what's, what's the impact of that? And, and the answer was, you know, basically, you know, it's, it's down in the noise. It's, it's almost in the accounting error, you know, a penny here, a penny there. I don't know what we're talking about for this. I guess we could go to Kerry, but, you know, we're, we're not talking, you know, this is one of our smaller accounts is mayor and aldermanic salaries and expenses. This just disappears when you compare it to almost anything else.
Well, and if it was fair to look at staff and adjust all those salaries and adjust all those pay grades, isn't it fair to look at ours as well? I mean, I know we're uncomfortable, I'm uncomfortable, but I know that none of us are going to be directly affected by this anyway unless we're reelected. So, we're doing it for the benefit of the city overall and future council.
Some will need to be elected twice. Some will need to be elected twice, because we're looking at 2027, so.
Right, right. But isn't it fair to look at ours, our salaries as well, if we look at the salaries of the rest of the city's staff?
Yes. I mean, we could, we could spend, I don't know, what was, did we get a, a number on what it would cost to look at the salaries we didn't look at when we did the salary study, Jay? I know I asked the question was, why weren't we looking at mayor and aldermanic salaries and so on?
Well, if your question is, did we study?
We didn't study, I know.
Yeah, we did not, not until you asked me to do this again.
What, what do you think it would cost to, to do a salary study?
That's what you're asking. I'm sorry, I wasn't understanding the question. I-
What would it cost to do a salary study?
Well, I, I wouldn't recommend paying for a salary study. I, I would, I would recommend you charging your staff with, coming up with comparisons, like similar to what you have in front of you tonight. If this isn't sufficient data, we can attempt to provide more data and fill in more boxes. But I don't think it's going to move the needle markedly one way or the other if I filled in more municipalities with comparable size populations.
The other element that I didn't include in my notes, but I think it's worth a discussion, is whether we want to incorporate in this ordinance an annual increase of a percentage. And part of that is getting to the point of future-proofing this so that we're not, we, this body is not having this conversation a decade, two decades, and three decades from now, going, wow, we're really not being compensated for our time compared to similar types of public servants in the area, or even within our own county. I don't know what that percentage is. I mean, I'll throw out 2% as that's what we've been, I would say probably over a period of time, and Jay would have to validate this from a budgetary standpoint. But if we look at nonrepresented employees, is, is 2% annually over a period of time a pretty fair increase? Fair in terms of looking at what we have increased over the course of, say, the last 10 years?
Ken, I, I have a quick question for Ian. Is, is it legal to put a, an escalator into something like this?
Well, that's what I was asking Jay about is, is there, and he said the county does, so I'm checking just to see if I can find a quick answer on that. I'm, I'm reasonably sure the only requirement is that whatever you're doing is in place prior to the election cycle, you know, prior to the point when you can pull papers, because it has to be a even playing field. And you can't change it midstream, but if you're, mid, midterm, but if you're saying explicitly in the ordinance, this is the annual escalator, I, I think it would, I think that's fine. I'm going to double check.
I also believe it gets us away from having the uncomfortable discussion about having compensation regarding yourself, which I don't, I can tell looking around this room, including myself, nobody's really comfortable having this discussion or conversation.
I am.
Okay, maybe Mark is. Fair enough.
I'm retiring.
We've had this discussion before. You know, I, I remember sitting up here, in my short time up here, that we've had this discussion, and it's always centered around political divide. And that's not what this body is about. This body is about working together, dropping our differences, and looking out for what's best of the city. And along Mary Beth's comments about, you know, not letting this happen again, and looking to the future, and doing this so we don't have to. Look at how much time we've spent talking about this item, both this meeting and last. And, you know, we've spent last, less time speaking on more important issues. So I just find it a little unfortunate that we have to spend this time doing this. I, I wish we could, you know, not have this task, and the fact that this body is required to, you know, adopt the ordinance or take action on the ordinance. All you got to do is look at social media and the backlash that's been brewing on social media concerning this one topic. And it just gets back to my frustration with it. And the fact that I'd like not to see it happen again. So that's why I would be in favor of a modest increase to, I guess, look at the future and the people that run when I'm not here. And, you know, look at the benefit that they'll have and not have to worry about which side they side with. So, I plan on voting in for, in favor of this ordinance.
So, just following up, yes, you can, I confirmed, yes, you can do an escalator clause. There's no, there's no issues with that, as long as it's set in place prior to the election. So you can't vote to change it midterm, but as long as you're saying X increase, you know, you could, well, you're kind of doing that already because you're saying the mayor's salary for the first year of the next mayoral term would be what it is now, and it would go up in the second year of the term because of the way you're phasing everything in in 2027, or you would be phasing everything in in 2027. So you can say, and it will go up at a 2% rate after that. I don't think you could say something undefined as easily. So like, if you said cost of living, that would be problematic because that's, that's not a set number. If you said the average of municipal employees' raises that year, that would be problematic because you would not have a set in stone number for that increase. So I think it has to be a set percentage increase.
That, that would be a problem because we would be the ones setting that-
Yes, prior to the election.
... raise, so effectively, we would have a, a in-the-year way to increase our salaries.
Correct. Correct. The other thing I will suggest, as, and it came up earlier in this meeting with a second reading, you can waive the rules. So if you guys, you can waive the rule, the requirement that it come back for a essentially third meeting at this stage. So you guys, before voting on the ordinance, you can vote to suspend the rule for the second reading, and it would be for immediate adoption regardless of whether it's a unanimous vote or not. It would just require two-thirds to suspend that rule, then you can immediately adopt, even if it's not a unanimous vote. And since there's expressed opinions that it would likely not be the unanimous vote, you guys can consider whether to make that motion prior to adopting, you know, make, make a final motion.
Um.
I believe, was it Mark's motion that first?
Yes. Yeah, we're, we're still-
Yeah, so it's-
We haven't amended it.
Yeah, so it's Mark's motion on the floor. You would need to amend the motion, and then you would make, if you so desired, make a motion to suspend the rules prior to voting on the amended motion.
And that would happen in two weeks, or?
So, so if you, no, 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 no. If you, you can vote to suspend the rule and immediately adopt today whether it's unanimous vote or not.
Okay.
The, the vote to suspend the rule requires two-thirds majority. But then the ordinance would still just be simple majority, just like any other ordinance.
Um, would it make, I, I like the idea of putting an escalator in here, and I couldn't find any way to figure out how to, how to do that, so I didn't. But I, I would like, I would like to, I, um, I, I would like to, can, can we basically come back with a, a version of this with the escalator clause in it? And, and I'll look at, at, I get with, if it's amenable to everybody, I'll get with Mr. Sternig as far as, you know, the numbers. Because I, I think that 35% is a political number, and I, you know, maybe, I don't know, 60%? Is that an amenable, you know?
I, I don't personally believe that 35% is a political number. It's putting us-
It, it's putting us in the-
Where, in the, in the same category as those similar communities, which is where we have put our employees.
Well, we generally don't try to put our employees smack dab in the center. I thought our goal was to put them somewhere in the upper, the upper third of true compar, true comparables. Not, you know, the first among the, the top third, but somewhere, we, we generally shoot to be in that, you're not at the top, but you're not at the bottom.
For what it's worth, I have the honor of serving on the Marin Park Technical College Board, which of course you know is the fourth taxing body, the school district, the county, the city, and Marin Park. Our board meetings, we meet once a month, but they're in Fond du Lac, they're in Beaver Dam. A couple of weeks ago, I spent the day in Madison lobbying our legislators for, on behalf of the college. In a couple of weeks, I'm going to Washington, DC to do the same thing, and I serve free, free of charge. There's absolutely no compensation for board members in any of the technical college systems around the state. And there's 160 some odd board members in the technical college system. I tell you that because I would do this position the same. The school district that I grew up in in Nebraska is about three times as big as the West Bend School District, as far as employees, budget, schools, and those board members serve free of charge as well. So maybe it's a Wisconsin thing that we all get a little bit of compensation. But again, for what it's worth, I would, I would serve in this role free of charge as well. I don't mean to brag about this, but it's true. My wife and I donate this entire salary back to nonprofits in the community. So I think that, again, that just kind of proves my point, that there are people who are willing to serve in these roles, whether you pay them or not, whether it's, whether you're the least, you're, you're last on the list, or top on the list. I don't think it makes a difference personally. We've had alderman positions that are open, that have been, we've been able to fill with great people. We've got a, a race right now that's an open seat, that's, there's three solid candidates running for that. So I, I personally just don't think that increasing the salary for any of our positions really makes a difference at all on whether or not good people choose to run for these positions. And I don't want to speak for our previous mayor, but hell, he had five children, and he had no problem coming to meetings and being present in the community. And he figured it out as far as babysitters go and that sort of thing. So I just, I, if we do anything here, I think it needs to be, it needs to be minimal, and maybe minimal with a 2% escalator as you go year by year to keep it reasonable. But I'm just, I'm not in favor of a nearly doubling the mayor's salary and, well, quite frankly, nearly doubling the alderman's salary. I just, I don't, I agree with Alderman Schmidt. I don't think that's a good look. And again, I don't think it really makes a difference for people who want to serve their community.
I'd like to make a motion to amend the ordinance to a aldermanic, excuse me, mayoral salary of 10,285, aldermanic salaries of 5,720. The mayor receiving a monthly expense allowance of $250, and the older person's a monthly expense allowance of $50. And that aligns loosely with the proposal that I had brought forward. I would also recommend or like to add into this an increase of 2% annually occurring on May 1st. Does that allow, does that, Jay, from a-
Yeah.
-procedural standpoint work within finance?
Yep.
And in that way, we're done having this conversation about it until some future body decides they want to do something differently than this body does, should we enact this?
We have, we have a motion on the table from Alderman Allen first, don't we?
He's proposing a-
Is this a friendly amendment?
He's proposing a friendly amendment, so I'm looking at it right now. Because as I understand it, I have to accept or reject.
Accept or, and then if your motion fails, then Alderman Sternig could make a similar motion with the, with his amendment.
Ian, just for clarity, if, if Matt's amendment is Matt's amendment, then it would, it would be changing Alderman Allen's motion to the smaller numbers, right?
Correct, correct. So if, it would be either Alderman Allen accepting it as an amendment to his motion, or there would be a vote on his motion. And then if that failed, Alderman Sternig could make a, a motion-
Understood.
-with his amendment. So I mean, it's, yeah.
I will accept the, and second the friendly amendment. And I-
So then, so then my question is, based on kind of the discussion after my point about the suspension of the rules, I guess the question is, is, I mean, as the moving, the person who made the motion, is the intent that then we will take a first reading, vote on the first reading with the amended motion, and we will bring back the revised ordinance for the second reading? So the revised ordinance is in front of everybody for the second vote?
Yes.
Okay. That, that makes sense.
All right, there's a motion and a second on the floor. Alderman salaries at $5,720 a year with a $50 per month expense, expense payment, and the mayor's salary at 10,285 with a $250 per month expense payment with a 2% annual increase. This would take effect on May 1st, 2027, with obviously the 2% being on May 1st of 2028 and beyond. Did I read that right?
That's correct.
Yes.
Okay. Comments, questions, discussion?
So the alderman expense actually goes down from just 50 a month, it would be 300, it's currently 360, isn't it?
No.
Am I looking at the math wrong?
It'll be 600.
600.
What was, what was in the, the original ordinance that he, that Alderman Allen had was the higher number. Currently, it's $30 a month.
So it's $50 a month.
Increasing it to 50, correct.
Got it.
Any questions? All right, and I'm second here, I'm going to call the vote. And if this is not unanimous, then this will come back at our next meeting for a second reading. Any other comments, questions, discussion?
Isn't it going to need to come back for a second reading to have all the words?
If it passed unanimously, I have enough, we could make the changes.
Okay.
Any other questions? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Two. So that will lay over to our next meeting for a second reading, and we will update the draft ordinance so that it's written out in front of us for our next meeting. All right, thank you. A report on the Joint Review Board from January of, January 21st. This was a very short meeting. It was the TID District, TID 18, correct?
17.
17, TID 17, which passed unanimously by the Joint Review Board. So that was, again, a quick meeting and passed unanimously. Parks and Rec Commission on January 30th.
Yeah, Parks and Rec, January 30th, skate park update. Ryan gave an excellent presentation on the history of the skate park in West Bend, going back to 2003 when the equipment was donated by the Rotary Club of West Bend Sunrise. The location has been moved several times. The equipment is old and unusable, and a new site is needed. The study had a list of 23 suggested locations. They were each put through a review of 18 primary- They were each put through a review of 18 primary criteria, and it's now narrowed down to four or five possible sites. Additional input from the community is needed as to location and potential usage, so they will reach out to the community for some opinions. There was a Boy Scout presentation, presentation regarding the construction and installation of steps at Ridge Run Park. This is an Eagle Scout project and will install steps on a current dirt path on a hill between the soccer fields and the parking lot. It's, right now, it's just a dirty muddy path, so he's going to put some steps in there. The plan was accepted and the young man was congratulated on his idea. Summer program fees were announced. They are similar to last year with just some small adjustments. The Aqua Park fee would increase from $4 to $8, but there will be various package deals available, punch cards and early purchases and so forth. The general swim pass, on the other hand, will go down a little bit because, due to the absence of the diving ramp. Lac La Ron, the number of campers or camps, rather, will increase by 30%. They are always popular and they fill very quickly. Progress continues on the nature playground. Staff is busy building for the playground. When it was bitter cold and they couldn't do things outdoors, they were busy indoors building. Retirement, Mike Starle, who has served on many committees over the years, including 17 years on the Park and Rec Commission, decided to retire. Was a bittersweet final meeting for him. He received a standing ovation from the commission and he will definitely be missed. So thank you, Mike, for your guidance and your service. Additional thank yous, Director Mike Gents thanked all the local organizations that contribute to all the programs in West Bend. We would not have this beautiful park system without the generosity of so many other outside organizations. There were a few other things, some naming rights and donations, but I'll let Mike Gents bring that to the next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Administrator report.
I'd just share, there's been a lot of buzz about the federal pause on funding and grants and loans, and the most expansive one that we've received that's in question or in pause is the SAFER grant for the nine new firefighters. So just know that your team is working with the grant authorities on that topic and the National League of Cities and the League of Wisconsin Municipalities as well, so pay attention to all that and doing the best that we can to navigate any, any kind of pause and impact to the city. I'll answer any questions that you might have.
Have we started posting and recruiting for those positions?
We are actively, yeah, but we have not hired any of them as of yet.
Okay, any questions for Jay? Any alderperson reports tonight? Alderman Allen?
I would like to let everybody know that there is a rousing bid board meeting tomorrow morning, so if you desire to get up early, it's 8:15 right here.
Request?
Sir, I was prepared to give a library board report for the library meeting that happened on January 21st, but it's rather lengthy, so if you don't mind, I'll make sure it's on the agenda for next month and cover it then.
Okay. Sternig?
No?
Anybody over here? There are, I'm looking forward to going to an Eagle Scout, two Eagle Scouts, and I forgot their names, and I actually, I think one of them might be a female on Sunday morning, and so there's two of them. It'll be the same troop, and so I'm looking forward to going to that on Sunday. That's all I got. Any other announcements? All right, our next meeting will be on February 17th. Bid board, Plan Commission tomorrow night, right here at 6 o'clock. Library board on the 18th, Parks and Rec Commission on the 27th, so check the agendas, but our next council meeting will be on the 17th. All right, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.